Meeting to order. Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Raiden.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez.
Present.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic, the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Our fair mayor is under the weather today, so I am here in his place. Let's just take a look at the agenda. Any changes, councilmembers? All right, seeing none, the agenda is approved. Reports. Councilmember Mike, not councilmember. City manager, acting city manager today.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. As you mentioned, I am not Jim Becklinburg, but I'm here in his place and look forward to helping us through the meeting tonight. I do have one kind of fun announcement, and I asked our esteemed city clerk to help me with a visual display. We recently received our open spaces shareback from Arapahoe County. This is part of our annual funding that comes from a quarter percent sales tax that was approved by voters for the improvements and maintenance of local parks, trails, and open spaces. And along with that annual distribution of funds to the partner agencies, they also have the opportunity to apply for grants. And our city applied for and was awarded three grants. That includes $562,500 to pave and widen a portion of the mineral trail to improve for multiple user types, $135,000 to support a feasibility study for a potential underpass of the High Line Canal Trail at Mineral Avenue, and $80,000 to support a master plan for Kettering and Gallup Parks. So we're very grateful for our partnership with Arapahoe County, and we look forward to doing our best to take care of the open spaces that are entrusted to us here in the city of Littleton. And that's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Excellent, and for the record, Councilmember Milliman is here. At 6:32, 6:32, okay. City Attorney, what do you have for us?
Hi, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. No real report other than I would tell you that last week and this weekend, I was in California at the International Municipal Lawyers Association, and I attended quite a few different classes, if you will, that were very informative. So it was a good conference, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmembers, Councilmember Barr, report?
Yeah, thank you much, and I've got a couple of things to report out on. First off, if you haven't received emails through Littleton Public Schools, there is a candidate forum for the Littleton Public Schools election happening tomorrow night from 6:30 to 8:30 in the boardroom. There is limited seating, but the event will be livestreamed, so if you're interested in seeing those candidates for that election, please tune into that. With regards to the Environmental Stewardship and the Next Generation Advisory Committee, they are meeting this month, or sorry, tomorrow night and Thursday night, so no news there yet. Dr. Cog did hold a monthly board meeting for September. Couple of key things that came out of that meeting. First off, we had an informational presentation on Proposition 123 from two officers from DOLA. Just want to commend the city and the staff for getting aligned with Proposition 123 and putting our application in to be eligible for funding. So no new news there, but Dr. Cog, Denver Regional Council of Governments, is the area agency on aging. We had a long and pretty, I would say, eye-opening presentation from the director of the AAA Services for Dr. Cog related to workforce and the healthcare sector for seniors, as well as transportation. The deficit for transportation services is expected to be very, very high in the near term. Dr. Cog is losing a huge portion of their funding, federal funding, to provide transportation services to seniors. I hope that we, as a city and staff, can not only continue to fund our omnibus and via mobility services for our seniors, but it's very likely that in the near future, we may need to look at reallocating or expanding those funds as we see regional partnerships lose their funding sources. Many other municipalities at the board meeting also felt the same pinch in terms of the need for senior transportation. Another large part of this meeting or this presentation by the AAA Services was the fact that home healthcare services are in dire straits. Not only is there just a fewer number of workers, but there are a fewer number of providers than pre-COVID. We went from about 40 service providers to now about 31, so we have a significantly diminished capacity for in-home care services. That workforce is just not returning and bouncing back post-COVID the way that a lot of other healthcare services are. And a lot of that actually is due to not only regulations and restrictions around that workforce, but honestly, just the affordability for those workers to live and work in the Denver metro area. So this, again, it was pretty stark and silent in the room when that presentation was being made, but I just wanted to let the council and staff know that this might be something that we need to be looking ahead on in the coming years. So that's all I have for Dr. Cog and my announcements. Thank you much.
Thanks, Councilmember Barr. Councilmember Grove?
Yes, last Saturday, the 26th, we had a citizen meeting, and we had a presentation from our chief, Doug Stevens, on safety, and very engaged. The citizens really liked it. It was just very appropriate and relevant to anybody just to make sure that they're safe, and it worked out nicely. Then we went on to have some discussions that were prompted by the citizens. We talked about puppy mills. We're going to be discussing that here, I guess, next week at a study session. Lively discussion on density in the city, park hours, the state of our sidewalks and Geneva Village. So we spent some time on that and had a lively exchange. So anyhow, it was a great meeting and really enjoyed it.
Great, thank you. And I will add that I attended the Fiesta that North Littleton Prom is hosted on Friday, and it was lovely. They have a new vision for their community, and they've also moved into the East Community Center and are operating their programming. And just as a reminder, North Littleton Prom supports our immigrant families in Littleton. Also a reminder that the craft fair is going to be at Kettering Park this Saturday, 9:00 to 4:00, and that the museum fall festival is going to be next Saturday, the following Saturday, from 10:00 to 3:00. That'll be at the museum and on the grounds, and it's just a really fun time to embrace the fall. And since Greg is here, I want to remind everybody that we've got the pumpkin polls downtown, and they are going to be amazing. I believe we have sponsored one, or at least we are going to sponsor one, as the city, and that's just another fun thing to bring families to, and of course, shop the local businesses while you're there. Councilmember Valdez?
No report.
Hi, everybody. So just one quick update. Also at Littleton Museum this coming Wednesday, there's going to be a fascinating presentation by Thomas Andrews, who's a professor of history at CU Boulder. His topic is Killing for Coal: How Militant Miners and Resistant Capitalists Fought to Control Colorado's Future, which melts nicely with the current exhibit there called Below the Surface, which showcases how mining has altered Colorado's social and cultural landscape over the years, so I hope everybody can attend.
And I guess I'm next, final. Reminder, tomorrow at 8:00 over at Littleton Town Hall, the Hoodlum Medium Historic Downtown Littleton Merchants. Come on down, learn what's happening downtown. On the 11th, we have the Littleton Business Chambers having a candidate gathering over Rice Bistro starting at 6:00, no, it's starting at 4:00, excuse me. So come on by if you want to meet, really, all four candidates. And then on the 10th, Little Ravens having their ribbon cutting at 3:00, and then one last ribbon cutting on the 19th, Littleton Golf and Tennis. South suburban, they've replaced that tennis bubble, and they're finally getting ready to open that facility, so come on by. That's at 6:00 in the evening. Thanks.
Excellent, all right, thanks, thanks, everybody. All right, we've got no scheduled appearances, we've got no proclamations, which I'm really broken up about. Public comment. So public comment, it's an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of our public hearings or that are not on tonight's agenda. A separate opportunity will be provided for comments for the public hearing scheduled later on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The city council is not authorized, under the Colorado Open Meetings Law, to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor, Pro Tem, myself, I may refer the matter to the city manager or the city attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or I can refer that to staff to obtain additional information and report back to our city council as appropriate. We expect comments, of course, to be civil, disrespectful, or disruptive behavior. It's not going to be tolerated. So, Andy Schisler? Come on up. Three minutes is yours, and welcome.
Do I go up to the podium?
Yeah.
I live in Littleton in South Park, close to, up the hill from Mineral and Santa Fe, and through the public discourse, I learned recently that you all voted 6 to 1 to approve a zoning change for the former Martin Marietta building that's between Broadway and Mineral, between Broadway and Santa Fe on Mineral, a large property that was started out as the office and rocket manufacturing facility for Martin Marietta. Through the years since 1950, it's had several residents, and I understand that there's a zoning change that was approved by you, 6 to 1, which will allow 300 to 400 residential units and some commercial space. And I just want to voice my, express that I'm against further high-density housing in any way, shape, or form. I further understand that you recently voted an approval to allow the Geneva Village to transform from its present X number of units, 20 to 30 units, to a very tall skyscraper housing many units. And those decisions, including the benchmark decision made five years ago or so to allow Aspen Grove to transform from purely a strip mall or shopping center to allow high-density housing, the vote was 4 to 3. I just, all those progressions, all those votes go against one common goal that I think we all have, and that is to preserve the character of Littleton. The city of Littleton is a bedroom community of Denver, and it has always been a community of single-family homes and yards and a community of safety. The, I'll leave it at that. I would also like to add that from 2008 to 2013 or so, the city council displayed extreme excellent fiscal conservative decision-making. You kept city spending at around $45 million for five years, and then roughly in 2012, after the financial crisis is over and things start to move again, the budget was $56 million.
Thank you for coming tonight.
And now, this next year, it's 113. That represents a 6% compounded annually, annual growth rate for city spending, 6% of your increase.
Point of order, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Andy. Karen?
Karen Talenter? And sorry, my printer died, so we'll see if I can read my own handwriting. You all should know that last week, the DOJ referred Smartmatic for criminal prosecution for bribery and money laundering during a rigged Philippine election. Smartmatic is one brand of election machines. I think they're only used one or two places in America. And this news actually made it to CNN, and I have emailed each of you the link in case you're interested. So the Department of Justice has essentially admitted that Smartmatic software can and did rig elections. But what about that just because the Department of Justice got company executives for bribery and money laundering at the time of a rigged election in the Philippines? That doesn't mean they rigged the election. I think there is a phrase for that. Bless your innocent naive little heart. Maybe you were thinking this has nothing to do with Littleton, and nothing except that Arapahoe County uses Dominion election software, which comes from Smartmatic election software, along with a former Smartmatic employee you may have heard of, Eric Coomer. Do you think Littleton could maybe find a better election system that isn't internationally involved in bribery and money laundering? Maybe this would be a really good time for Littleton to step back from these election machines. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else who wants to speak who didn't sign up? All right, seeing none. City Attorney, Deputy City Manager, any reactions or thoughts?
Yeah, I'll just respond briefly to Mr. Andy Schisler. So I believe the development that he's referencing was in front of, it's the Amely property. It's a property that is in the Littleton Village area that went to planning commission for an MDP, and I believe it was approved 6 to 1. In terms of Lumen site, if that is relevant, that is actually going to require a rezoning for a portion of that property. That will be going to planning commission in terms of a rezone on November 13th. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinance must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member. I will read each consent agenda item into the record. This is going to be fun. Okay. A, Ordnance 24, 2023. An ordinance on first reading appropriating funds for the 2024 annual budget for all municipal purposes of the city of Littleton, counties of Arapahoe, Douglas and Jefferson, state of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024. B, Ordnance 25, 2023. An ordinance on first reading establishing the tax levy of 2.0 mils to defray the costs of municipal government of the city of Littleton, counties of Arapahoe, Douglas and Jefferson, state of Colorado, for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024. C, Ordnance 26, 2023. An ordinance on first reading of the city of Littleton, Colorado, as the governing body of the city of Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise, adopting the 2024 budget. D, Ordnance 27, 2023. An ordinance on first reading of the city of Littleton, Colorado, as the governing body of the city of Littleton Stormwater and Flood Management Utility Enterprise, adopting the 2024 budget. E, Ordnance 29, 2023. An ordinance on first reading amending Title I, Chapter 14, regarding land development impact fees. F, Ordnance 30, 2023. An ordinance on first reading of the city of Littleton, Colorado, as the governing body of the city of Littleton Sewer Utility Enterprise, amending the 2023 sewer budget. G, Resolution 107, 2023. Approving a memorandum of understanding between the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and the city of Littleton Police Department regarding the use of the Rock Armored Critical Incident Vehicle, R O O K. H, ID Number 23241, a motion to approve our minutes of the September 19, 2023 regular meeting of city council. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve items A through H.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
All right. Motion made by Councilmember Barr, second by Councilmember Driscoll. All right. Now's the time of reckoning. Let's see if I can do this vote. All right. All right, thumbs up, yeah. Thumbs up if you're cool with it. The vote is six in favor of the motion carries.
It just came up?
Now it's, okay. All right. General business. We have one general business item today, and it's going to involve a staff presentation, so we'd love to have the staff to come on up and present. It's going to be Resolution 106-2023, confirming city council's support of a yes vote on ballot measure 3K, allowing the city to keep revenues already received and continue using them for critical and other backlog capital projects that citizens approved in November of 2021.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. So September 5, the city council unanimously approved placing a question on the ballot that if approved, will allow the city to keep revenues that have been collected via the 3A sales tax. This ballot question is called 3K. The funds that are collected from this tax that was approved by voters in 2021 are used to complete many infrastructure improvements and capital projects throughout the city. The city does not advocate for or against ballot questions. However, the city council is permitted to take a stance and consider this resolution encouraging support for the ballot measure, and that's what's before you tonight.
All right, any questions? All right, discussion? Okay, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 106-2023?
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution 106-2023, confirming city council's support of a yes vote on ballot measure 3K, allowing the city to keep revenues already received and continue using them for critical street maintenance and other backlog capital projects that citizens approved in November of 2021.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, and now we're going to do a vote. I'm going to do it. I'm going to do it. Okay. All right. Ha ha, okay. Wait, open. All right. All right. Clerk? Did I close it? Did you get? It's missing. There we go. The vote is six in favor of the motion carries. All right. Second reading and public hearing. All right, we have, this is just a reminder to citizens, those who came will be able to speak on this tonight if they wish. There is a sign-up sheet in the back if you want to talk on Ordnance 2023. This is going to be an ordinance on second reading approving the amendments to Title 10, known as the Unified Land Use Code, ULUC, of the Littleton City Code, and to the zoning map. We have folks joining us from the city for a presentation.
Good evening, council. We're here tonight to present the council ordinance 20-2023, the Unified Land Use Code text amendment and zoning map amendment. Presenting tonight, I am Zareen Tazneem, a planner too with the community development department, and I am joined by Jared Chipman, senior planner with the community development department as well. So what is the ULUC or the Unified Land Use Code? It is a living It is a living document that sets the standards for zoning subdivision and design within the City of Littleton. It's an implementation of the 2040 Vision, also known as Envision Littleton. It sets the framework to guide land use within the borders of Littleton, and it's meant to stimulate private investment to leverage city investment. In the batch of code amendments presented to you tonight, there are several main topics being addressed. This includes adaptive reuse. We are introducing a new land use application process from the existing code on adaptive reuse. We are making some changes to the Cottage Court Community Section related to densities, setbacks, maximum dwelling size, and parking requirements. We're also proposing changes to the accessory dwelling unit section, including streamlining the process by removing the requirement for a conditional use permit for detached ADUs, and proposing to allow temporary small signs without a permit needed. For some procedural changes, we're making two processes. This includes the major plan amendment, the minor plan amendment, and the master development plan processes. We're also making some minor chapter updates to sections found in Chapter 1, 3, and 12. And there are a slew of zoning map amendments that we are proposing as well to correct some errors that were made initially in the approval of the 2021 map, and removal of some PLO designations due to approval of several MDPs in the past year. So some of these fine tunings were done based on mitigating risk, assuring transparency, adding predictability, establishing consistency, providing clarity, and improving simplicity. The next series of slides highlights some of the zoning map amendments that we are proposing, the first of which is this location on West Bowls Avenue. It's currently zoned as open space, which was done in error during the 2021 zoning map rewrite. The current use is actually a single, private, single-family residential home, therefore we are proposing to a zoning district that more aligns with the existing use and what is underlying in that property, which is acreage residential, or ACR. This next location on the southwest corner of South Hill Street and West Ridge Road identifies the series of already developed lots as having a multifamily residential and planned overlay district zoning. However, the actual existing use of single-family residential and the underlying planned development actually only allows for single-family residential, so we are proposing to correct this zoning for the lots highlighted in green to be MLR slash PLO instead. This area highlighted is currently designated as CM slash PLO. Last year, a master plan, master development plan was enacted for the Aspen Grove Development to remove the PLO designation, therefore we are proposing that correction to be made just so it would have the underlying zoning of P, of CM. This property on South Platte Canyon Road currently has a designation of open space slash PLO. However, the current use is commercial, and we are proposing to change the zoning to Business Center Plan Overlay District, or BC slash PLO, to better align with the existing use and underlying planned development. Another property that went through the MDP process last year to remove the PLO is located here on the southwest corner of West Mineral Avenue and Santa Fe Drive, so we will be, we are proposing to remove the PLO on this property and just have it be CM.
All right, thank you very much, Zareen. To take it from there, the next slide is also a location that had a PLO designation on it. However, an MDP was approved throughout the course of the last year that is prompting us to request removal of this PLO designation just down to the CM zoning, which is what it would be currently. This is a site that, quite the opposite is what's being proposed. Staff found an existing plan, plan development overlay for this area. It's kinda interesting because it's only the eastern portion of that commercial area. The western portion was developed separately. And so we are requesting that the PLO designation be placed on this property to better indicate to potential applicants and to the existing owners what the actual zoning is there, that there is that other document. This is, and this is an item that's very similar to one that Zareen talked about previously, that when the zoning map was updated from 20, in 2021, to include the new zoning districts, this district was originally zoned PDR. And the PDR meant that there was a PLO over top of it. However, when it was updated into the land use code, it was updated to MLR PLO, or MFR, excuse me, multifamily. This is not a multifamily development, it is a single-family development, and the PLO actually mandates that it is a single-family development, so we're trying to correct this one as well to a single-family designation rather than the MFR, the MLR. To go down through our process, this was a, you know, a good process that we've gone through here in the last few months, started in April at the Plan Commission with a study session, then we moved through May with another study session, then we really got into our public outreach at the end of May into June. And first public comment period concluded in, on June 5. We also had staff at the Meet, Greet, and Eat on June 21st. Then July 10, public open house was conducted prior to the Plan Commission meeting that night, which we had another study session regarding the text changes and the map changes. Then the second public, second public comment period closed on July 17. Plan Commission recommended approval on August 14. However, they did recommend approval with a couple conditions, and we're going to talk about those here shortly. And then the first reading before the City Council was on September 19, and then here we are this evening. Community input. So, notice was shared over social media about the ULUC update process. The public outreach that we also attended, actually several of the Meet, Greet, and Eats. We had two public comment periods, and the public open house, as I mentioned before, on July 10. And then we did have over 100 comments through the Ncode Plus software that we use. We also did take handwritten comments at the open house and verbal comments at the Meet, Greet, and Eats. So, to get into what the Plan Commission discussed, the two conditions that the Plan Commission placed on their recommendation for approval for these ULUC code updates, the first one was in regards to the buffer yard requirement. So the buffer yard requirement states, well, first of all, it was, it was removed, the Plan Commission recommended putting the text back, however with a slight modification. So the text currently states, "Privacy fence shall be opaque and at least six feet tall." The correction that is being proposed is that the text remain and that it state, "Privacy fence shall be opaque and six feet tall." See, the, the issue there is that we require six-foot-tall fences in other portions of the code, and that's our maximum. So to say at least six feet tall was just conflicting within the code. So you have several, you have several options in regards to this item. The first one would be to adopt the proposed code changes as is, which would remove the, the text in general. The second would be to revise the buffer yard table to state either A or B, that privacy fence shall be opaque and at least six feet tall, or privacy fence shall be opaque and six feet tall. The second item is a little more complex than the first. We talked about the Plan Commission recommended looking into the possibility of amending the number of residential signs that are allowed. And the Plan Commission direction was to work on this in regards to a linear frontage. So, looking at it from, and, and they commissioned staff to work out some of these finer details. So we are proposing, so staff is proposing several options. One of them is in conformance with what the Plan Committee, what we feel is the Plan Commission's intent. So I'll just start with the, the first option, which is adopt the code as is, which City of Littleton's code currently is, proposed stake sign restriction, there's three signs per residential location, and four square feet, and 20 square feet of total sign area. So basically, you'd only be able to have four square, four square foot sign, and you'd be able to have three of those in your yard. Plan Commission thought that that was too few. And so, as I mentioned, the first item would be to adopt the code as is. The second would be to allow for a maximum of four stake signs in residential districts with lot frontages of 50 feet or less, and then to stair step up to seven stake signs for lot, residential lot frontage of higher than 50 feet. And then, we have an A and a B on this one as well. The A would be to keep a maximum area of the stake sign in residential zone districts as four square feet, and the B would be to increase that to six square feet. In the staff communication that we've written, staff did conduct some additional research, looked at what the surrounding, or the surrounding communities are doing, and most of them are at that six-square-foot area, sign area for residential. And that's really why staff is proposing amending the size of the sign. And then lastly, it was staff's opinion, we're happy to move forward with the Plan Commission's recommendation. However, staff did feel that might be a little easier to enforce such restrictions not on a linear foot or linear frontage basis. And so instead is proposing just kind of a blanket, blanket standard, that would be five stake signs in residential districts, except during the period between September 1 and ending on November 15, each calendar year, where the number of stake signs allowed for residential, residential districts would be unlimited. And then we also have the A and B, which is the size requirement of that sign, the four-square foot or the six-square feet. Couple of the neighboring or surrounding municipalities do have that carve out from September 1 to November 15, and staff thought that that might be a, a good means of addressing, you know, some signage complaints and enforcement. And then lastly, this is an annual update. That's how we've been looking at our ULUC updates, is that this is a living document. We want to keep updating it, changing it, et cetera. We're happy to take topic ideas for the next update. For instance, we have heard from the City Council, and it was reinforced by the Plan Commission, that additional in-depth research into ADUs and their locations, or allowance locations within the city would be something that, that would be interested, that the City Council was interested in, in having that conversation. So we understand that that is top of the docket for the next round. And then, you know, we intend to take any additional inputs by the first quarter, or in the first quarter of 2024, and then we'll begin our process for public outreach, et cetera, and drafting these changes for the purpose of having a fall adoption for next year. And with that, I'd ask if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Questions, council?
I couldn't find it. On temporary signs, what, what does the code say, the revised code say about how far back from the street it has to be, or the sidewalk?
Yeah, thank you very much for that question. It was initially 15 feet in residential, so we're proposing to bring that back, because 15 feet could be in your porch. We're proposing to bring that back to a five-foot setback. And we're also proposing to, because a lot of people don't know exactly where their property line is, so trying to make it an easier measurement from, you know, the back of the sidewalk, or if you don't have a sidewalk, the back of the curb, something that, we're not allowing people, place them in the right way, of course, but trying to give people a little bit better gauge as to where that might be.
And that's in this round, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, this actually just goes more to process question than anything else, but with regards to the next round of ULUC revisions that we might be discussing in the first quarter of 2024, could staff explain essentially what we would be doing between now and then to accommodate any sort of modifications to ULUC in terms of proposing ideas? I would like to potentially propose an amendment tonight, however, I understand that the public process whereby you receive comment and conduct your outreach is important. However, I just do not want to necessarily lose the opportunity, so maybe the City Manager's Office could explain what the period of the next few months might be preparing to do in the next round of ULUC amendments.
Thanks, Mayor Protem and Councilmember Barr. Appreciate that. And before I get into that, just really wanna share our appreciation for the incredible work of the community development staff throughout these last, you know, six months, introducing, engaging with, including community members, and evaluating and reviewing these changes. You know, Jared, you might be able to remind us of the total number of suggestions that were received in, in, in the code. How many were there?
Yeah, there were over 100.
Over 100 suggestions received in, in writing, which, which is excellent. We've also received, on top of that, additional feedback in council from, and guidance from our City Council. And so, even, even tonight, the feedback that's provided will, will help us stage for this next year's efforts and work. And, and that, that door won't close. So Jared talked about how we'll, we'll begin our work product so we can hit the ground running in January, and really, over these next few months, we're, we're listening to and, and accepting feedback and, and requests, so to speak, from, from, from all corners, but certainly from City Council. And tonight's a great opportunity, so whatever you're considering and thinking about, we'll make sure to make note of if, if it isn't something that's changed tonight.
And I will add, if you haven't had a chance to weigh in tonight, or something pops up later, depending on conversations with constituents, we'd welcome feedback if you can direct, like, certain code section or particular, just general section or topic in the code for us to look into before next year.
Other questions? Councilmember Grove?
In the changes you have, it's 10-3-3.2B. It talks about street-facing property. It's page 81, but I, I don't know if you have this on my...
Can you repeat the code reference again? I think we have it in front of us.
Let me find it. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay. It says, unless otherwise approved by a site plan or master plan, the primary building entrances shall face the street, or face the street or greater classification type according to the transportation master plan. How does that compare with the fact that slot homes, and are these slot homes, are prohibited in all districts?
So, slot homes are not permitted within the city of Littleton per Arlandi's matrix.
Right.
So, for this...
When the entrances have to face the street. Here, it seems to provide an exception. Am I reading it right?
No, so, this is meant to be read, shall face the street of greater classification type according to the transportation master plan. So, let's say you have a corner lot that faces two streets, or, you know, faces multiple streets. Our transportation master plan classifies the streets within the city of Littleton in a hierarchy. So, there's the highest hierarchy of arterial roads, so that's streets like Broadway or Bellevue, so really high volume. Next classification would be a collector's street, so slightly lower from arterial. The next classification would be a local street. So, this is just saying, whatever street this property is facing, based on whatever the designation of the streets according to the transportation master plan is, if it's facing a local and collector's street, the front of the building should really be facing whatever the street that has been classified as a collector's street. If it's facing a collector and arterial, then it should really be facing the street that's classified as arterial. Does that make sense?
So, it will still be street-facing, but it could be, there could be some exception, right? Unless otherwise approved by a site plan or master development plan?
Correct.
Okay, so, to me, that's a concern, that somebody could approve what in essence would be doors that would not face the street, correct?
Potentially.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, council?
I have a question. Could you elaborate a little bit more about the cottage community, cottage court communities, what the proposed changes are, specifically with densities, maximum dwelling size? Can you go a little bit more into that? As this, you know, I want folks to hear this, because this is a part of the missing middle type of housing stock that, you know, we really should take advantage of here in the city of Littleton, so, thanks.
Absolutely, thank you. So, some of the changes are that we felt that the cottage court community was a little ambiguous, it wasn't quite, very, it wasn't exceedingly well-defined, so we've been trying to work on, on proposing regulations that would kind of make it more the vision of the image that is located within the code. So, the first item that, that we looked at was maximum dwelling size. So, and that, I think speaks very, very truly to the missing middle item, is to try to keep those units, you know, for a size that would potentially be affordable, or at least fill that gap. And so, the single-family detached, we've looked at a maximum dwelling unit size of 1,200 square feet, and then it is, it decreases once you get into duplex, twin homes, and then multiplexes as well. Further, better-defined parking and garages as something that's intended to be shared, rather than have individual garages, to try and keep that cottage court feel. Let's see, there's also the table, which is not in the cottage court spot, so I apologize, let me find that.
Yeah, I can speak to the table, I have it in front of me.
Thank you.
Some of these changes came as a result of the joint study session that we had with planning commission and city council. So, we took suggestions of increasing the density allotment for the cottage court community's particular use, for each of the zone districts to match what is already there for the MFR zone district. So, the MFR zone district currently has, existing on the table, the cottage court commuting being a lock coverage of .6, and a maximum density of 16 dwelling units per acre. So, we took your all suggestion, and we mimic that onto the MLR and SLR zone districts, so that all zone districts would have equal lock coverage, densities, housing sizes, so it'd allow for more homes to be built on these other zone districts as well.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to piggyback on what Councilmember Barr asked earlier about going forward with the next round of updates, and what, what we can be doing just to bring our ideas forward, have the public discourse about those ideas, and try to move things a little quicker, specifically around ADUs is what I'm potentially, or particularly interested in. So, I appreciate that comment. And then, with regards to Governor Polis and his big ideas that he had last spring that weren't adopted, but it sounds like it's those ideas with regards to increasing density, specifically around transit-oriented development, changing some zoning laws to allow higher-density housing, so that we can try to lower the cost of housing here in this, this community and statewide. Have you heard anything about that, what might be coming in front of the legislature, legislation next year? What potentially could pass? What are we looking at with, with regards to our code that we can make those changes now, so that we're not, you know, that we're ahead of the curve, if you will?
All right, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Millman, thanks for the question. So, we're very aware that, that the governor's plans haven't changed, he's, he's very eager to, to see these type of housing accelerators put into place. That said, it does look like his strategy perhaps might change a little bit this year. We're, we're certainly trying to lobby for that to happen. The big, big thing missing last year was the city's being invited to the table to be part of the discussion. And so, I think that we have actually many areas of agreement that we can move forward with, and, and to your point, some of the things that we likely want to see and accelerate in this next, next round of ULUC changes will, will be, in essence, many of the things that, that Governor Polis was trying to, to put into place, but it'll be with our community's input and with your authority not, not being removed.
Councilmember Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. A couple things, back to Councilman Grove's question, when we were talking about which way does, does the door face, or the entry? I know that was a big deal when we originally came up with how we wanted doors to be, we didn't want them on the sides. So, if, if, and then on the corner, you, I got a little thrown off there with what you were saying. So, if a house is on a corner, say 101 A Street, and, and, and it's on the corner of A Street and B Avenue, does the home have to face A Street?
So, just a clarification, that the code section being referenced is specific to properties zoned with the, within the CMU zone district. So, this is specific to properties with the CM zone district and the NC zone district. So, if it's like a single-family residential, in terms of residential homes, they typically need to face a public street.
There's two public streets, though, in this case, if it's on a corner.
For a home?
Yes.
They would want to, they should, the property owner would need to decide which street they want to face.
So, if it's 101 A Street, it can face B Street, or B Avenue, if it's on a corner?
For the front door, they can choose which street to face, and that would determine what the address of the property would be.
And that would be pretty much the only exception then, right?
Well, the code section reference didn't apply to single-family homes. Is, is, I apologize.
Yeah.
Is what Zuri mentioned, is that the code section was for just larger buildings, CM and NC, so that neighborhood commercial, and then the corridor and mixed use, so it wouldn't really encompass the single-family homes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. The other thing, as far as density, as Councilmember Millman just mentioned, that the governor wants our state to be just density. I, I think citizens should speak up if they don't want that. I, I think the city of Littleton shouldn't create our zoning, not the governor, and the governor wants to create zoning for the city of Littleton, as well as the whole state. I, I really think it's important that all citizens speak up and make it clear, if they're opposed to that, that they don't want the, the state government telling Littleton how we have to have our city as far as buildings and stuff. So, I think it's important, so I just want to make that, thank you.
Any more questions? All right, Councilmember Grove?
Okay, so, back to this street-facing, where does it say that only pertains to commercial or commercial mixed use or whatever? I mean, I, I don't see it.
Yeah, so, the heading of the section, it says subsection 10-3-3.2B, CMU building and site design.
Ah, okay.
And it's located in the specific chapter related to CMU zone districts.
Okay, so, doesn't apply to residential?
No, it would not apply to the residential zone districts, which is encompassed under the MB, NB section, which is chapter four.
Oh, and one other comment. In talking to Representative Ortiz, he speculates, and this is also speculation of CML, that SB 213 will come back in pieces. So, instead of the broad-ranging changes that the governor wanted, that it, it will come, you know, one on ADUs, one on density, what, whatever, and it won't come as a comprehensive change, for what it's worth.
All right, with that, thank you, Zuri and Jared, right? Okay. Let's move to public comment on this. So, we'll open a public comment at 7:27 PM. I'll remind folks, you've got three minutes. And Lynn, I'm guessing this is you, this is your time, girl. Why don't you start us off?
Let me get your timer up, Lynn. You okay getting it up there?
I don't know yet.
I'll be right there.
And Lynn, we were provided digital copies as well.
I know, I have a little bit more detailed one. Okay, there, I think I got it.
Okay, let's get it up on the screen. We have all those discussions.
Okay, why do I start the slideshow again?
Let's wait for it to up on the screen.
Okay. We might need to put this on the staff laptop.
Okay. Well, it's in the presentation folder there, too. I see it. It's going to run from here, and you just use that to, so...
Okay, so, which one do I hit to go forward, the right arrow right here?
So, you'll see it there.
Okay.
And I'll bring it up here in just a second.
Okay, thanks.
So, point that at that computer.
Point it here?
Yeah. Is that easier?
Yeah, we'll try.
Oh, Jess?
Yay, there it is. All right, Lynn.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Lynn Christensen from District 3. Tonight, I'd like to share my online engagement comments. Firstly, 700 feet male notifications are not adequate to inform homeowners of proposed developments. As examples, Littleton Village residents were not notified of the first QuickTrip or most recent Denver number 38 restaurant neighborhood meetings. Consequently, only three people attended each meeting. However, a lot of upset homeowners attended the recent Lumen neighborhood meeting complaining they did not get notifications from the city. I am suggesting quarter-mile notifications in this round of revisions, so homeowners can participate in the development decisions that affect their properties and quality of life. Also, HOAs and metro districts should be notified. Secondly, the ULUC clearly requires compatibility and appropriate scale relationship relative to adjacent properties. Unfortunately, only one planning commissioner could see that placing a five-story apartment building next to one-story existing buildings did not meet this compatibility requirement for the recently approved Littleton Village Amley Apartments. Clearly, more accountability and oversight is needed by city council. Additionally, step backs should be required to offset the height difference in corridor mixed-use zones similar to the downtown districts. Next, please note that the maximum density for mixed use is 60 units per acre in corridor mixed-use zones. However, in the Littleton Village Amley project, the developer was allowed to build 89 units per acre in the first phase of development, even though they said they planned to sell the second parcel. This was due to a phasing loophole that needs to be changed, so that developers cannot significantly increase density. The ULUC is Littleton's housing legacy that shapes housing options for future generations, yet the ULUC has no requirement for housing diversity or missing-middle-for-sale types of housing. Consequently, the vast majority of housing on the development activity list is extensive, expensive, rather, high-density rental housing that limits the ability of residents to save for future financial needs. Owning a home is still the American dream and primary way to accumulate wealth for large future expenses, such as college and retirement. What is the legacy Littleton leadership is leading, leaving for future generations? I ask that my suggestions be discussed and included in tonight's amendments. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Lynn. Anyone else here want to speak on this issue? Yeah, Andy. Yeah, another three minutes if you want.
Gosh, I'd like to thank the previous presenter.
Please introduce, excuse me, please introduce yourself.
Andy Schisler, resident of Littleton. I, my hearing is hard. Sir, are you the city attorney? What, what did I say wrong during my first three minutes? You had said something about the vote to six to one was...
It, it was not a rezoning, but it was a master development plan, and it was in front of Planning Commission, not this city council.
Oh, okay, the city council didn't vote six to one in favor of rezoning the Lumen property?
The Lumen property has not been rezoned, that will come before Planning Commission first on November 13th.
Okay. Well, one parting comment, the Littleton Village, which is the form, was the former Marathon Oil Research Facility, that has failed. It's a high-density housing planned development that is an eyesore from Broadway, and we're, we're starting down the road of what Denver looks like when you go down the I-25, where there's apartment buildings after apartment buildings along, and what an eyesore that is. And that's not the legacy, I don't know if Denver wants to, wants to leave. And I've traveled internationally while I was working, and I've been in cities all over the world, and cities that have a similar appearance to that Denver has now in 50 years is how most cities look, and it looks awful. High-density housing does not remain a benefit, it, it's a detriment. And Councilman Millman, you, you had made the comment that high-density housing is an avenue to reduce the cost of housing, and that isn't, I, I would dispute that, that, that observation. It's not the... It's not the pathway to reduce the cost of housing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Andy. All right, with no other folks wishing to speak, we're going to close this portion of the public hearing at 7:35 PM, and I will call for a motion in a second to open discussion to approve ordinance 2023. Councilmembers?
Mayor, I'd like to actually offer an amendment before we take this vote pertaining to...
We have to have a main motion.
I should probably make the main motion first then, as my, the rest of my council has just informed me.
It's weird without Kyle here.
Yeah, I know, that's what messed me up. Mayor Protem, I move to approve ordinance 20-2023, an ordinance on second reading approving the amendments to Title 10, known as the Unified Land Use Code of the Littleton City Code and the zoning map.
Is there a second? Open it up for discussion?
Second.
All right, discuss.
Couple things. I don't know if I'm being picky, but I'm, I'm still concerned about this street facing, even in the commercial mixed-use district, and I'd just like to get rid of the unless otherwise approved by site plan or master plan. That just, it just seems too easy to have a building that's inappropriate, even if it's just a commercial building. So that's my thoughts. I don't know how the rest of council feels. Also, some of the things that were brought up by Lynn Christensen this evening, as well as some of the comments, the most recent comments in the packet, are these things that we can look at for the next round? Probably it's, we need a little bit more research and discussion on, on some of them tonight, but, for tonight, but can we put this on the spreadsheet that has all the updates to look at?
Certainly, if you guys want to, or if you want to reach out to us, so I know which specific topics, that would be really helpful to staff.
Yeah, I would propose that we look at the comments and what Lynn presented, because, for example, the setbacks and what we're seeing in terms of tall buildings next to smaller buildings. I mean, I was appalled over at Littleton Village that they built a building that was literally, I don't know how many feet, but it was not very far from current housing, and the response I got was, well, it was approved a long time ago, and we can't do anything about it now. Well, we can do things about, you know, making sure going forward that we have appropriate spacing and appropriate setbacks so that buildings mesh much better together. Thank you.
Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, I want to address some of the questions that community development brought up in terms of us amending this code and making some decisions with regards to both the privacy fences as well as the temporary signage. So I would like to first move to amend that the subnote on Table 10-1-3.6.F.1 read, "Privacy fence shall be opaque and six feet tall."
Second.
All right. Discussion on that amendment? Thank you. Yeah, discussion on that, if there is a second. All right, I will vote. I'm going to get better at this, I promise.
Mayor Protem, who was our second?
Yeah.
Councilmember Grove. Okay, ready to vote? Clerk, could you repeat the motion? Do you want us to repeat it?
That the subnote on Table 10-1-3.6.F.1 read, "Privacy fence shall be opaque and six feet tall."
All right, the vote is open. For this amendment? We've got everybody close. All right.
The vote is six in favor. The motion to amend carries.
Okay. Any other amendments? Councilmember Barr?
Regarding the community development staff's recommendations and that of planning commissions regarding the temporary signage and the request to make an amendment, I propose I move to amend Table 10-1-3.10.F to allow a maximum of five stake signs in residential districts, except during the period beginning on September 1st and ending on November 15th of each calendar year, where the number of stake signs allowed on residential lots is unlimited, and to increase the maximum area of a stake sign in residential zoning districts to six square feet.
Second. All right, there's a second. Can you read that amendment back? Oh, discussion, thank you. Discussion on that. What's your concern, Steve?
I have no particular concern. This is at the community development team's request that we look at options regarding the temporary signage and make those amendments tonight.
All right, then with no other discussion or questions, we will vote. And the motion is, clerk?
Councilmember Barr moved, and Councilmember Milliman seconded to amend Table 10-1-3.10.F to allow a maximum of five stake signs in residential districts, except during the period beginning on September 1 and ending on November 15, each calendar year where the number of stake signs allowed on residential lots is unlimited, and to increase the maximum area of a stake sign in residential zoning districts to six square feet.
All right, the voting is open.
The vote is six in favor, the amendment carries.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Grove?
Based on this street facing, I would like to amend subsection 10-3-3.2B, CMU Building and Site Design, under three side orientation, street facing, to delete, quote, "unless otherwise approved by a site plan or master plan development," unquote, and start the sentence with, "The primary building entrance shall face the street of greater classification type according to the transportation master plan."
Is there a second? No second, clerk?
It died.
It died, okay.
No second.
Okay, it died. We'll move to...
Make her read her back anyway.
We'll move to a main motion, a main motion on the recommendations. Yeah. You, all right, Councilmember Barr?
Not to, no more amendments, but would like to tell the community development staff, thank you again for all the work that you've done on this. I asked the question about ULUC amendments in the upcoming session. My hope is for the accessory dwelling units to increase the applicability of those ADUs in not only alley accessible for detached ADUs, amending Table 10-1-1.7.2. That is my hope for this upcoming session. In addition, I think a lot of work was done on the landscaping requirements. That kind of flew under the radar, but a lot of good work came in under the landscaping requirements, which I really appreciate. One thing I was hoping to do, and this may take some more thought and effort, is regarding limited water, limitations on irrigation water usage, to be such that we are not watering sidewalks and streets nearly as often. Better for our river health, better for our environment, no sense in wasting the water. We should hold ourselves to that standard, as well as the city, as our, as well as our residents. So these are the two areas I'd like to focus on, and I'll probably reiterate that all in an email to y'all, but thank you for taking the time to amend the code this way.
Okay. And I will just add that the ADU discussion also, I look forward to more discussion around that, more information, and what you bring to us early next year, so, and thank you. All right, with no other discussion, I will call for a vote. It is open. All right, clerk?
The vote on the main motion as amended carries six to zero.
All right, fantastic. So with no further business, the regular meeting is adjourned at 7:45 PM. Let's take five minutes where we're going to reconvene for a study session over there.
To try to allow more sound being outside.
It's echoing.
And with nobody over there, it's echoing kind of funny. When there was like 10 people over there, it bounced differently.
Okay, well, I'm glad that no audience can...
They're trying to... The acoustics in the room.
No, I appreciate the effort.
Oh my god, you're echoing.
You are too.
Thanks.
Please don't sneeze.
All right, you good?
Yep.
All right, I'll turn it over to W.C. manager Mike Chen.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Council. So as you can see tonight, we are joined by one of our favorite colleagues Lucy Lucero, who's the primary city contact and staff support for the community partnership, the Stadium District Funding Grant Programs. When we get to questions and answers, if you have questions about a specific application, she's going to be the one with the expertise and the details. So tonight, we are hoping to gain direction from City Council regarding your support for the recommended grantees and the amounts, so we can finalize the recommendations and bring back an action item for budget approval.
You're doing great.
Thanks, Reed. So there are three community grant programs that were discussed this evening. And Council has the discretion to award any of these amounts or to make changes. Grants have historically been provided to nonprofit organizations in the community that provide services to our residents in ways that the city may not be able to. The three primary grant programs are local partnership grants, which are included in the 2024 Recommended Budget at $72,900 and will be distributed in 2024. Local partnership funding no longer includes arts, culture, and tourism requests as these applications are now solicited through the Arts and Culture Grants, supported by the Lodger's Tax approved by the Lords in 2022. The Arts and Culture Commission will have a joint study session with City Council next week and will be presenting award recommendations for City Council's consideration there. And then the Stadium District Funding, which comes from a one-time payment to the city of Littleton related to the sale of the Denver Broncos Football Club, is restricted for the benefit of youth activities and programs in our community. These funds will be available immediately after Council approval. So the local partnership funding again is $72,900. We received 27 applications totaling $267,000, more than $267,000 requests, and three in-kind service requests with an approximate value of $60,000. And that's on top of the $267,000. The Stadium District Funding is up to $1,029,200, and it's designated for youth activity programs. We received 17 applications totaling $1,083,800. Okay, just to kind of go through the process for how this was rolled out. On May 12th, the City Council discussed and outlined the process for how we would go about considering inviting applications and then reviewing and scoring them. July 21st through August 21st, the application period was open. And then September 12th through the 21st, each individual councilor was given the applications to review and to score, and then to return to Lucy, who then consolidated that information and allowed us to analyze it and put together these recommendations that are being considered tonight. The criteria used to form the recommendations is similar to that used in past years. Rankings were based on at least four councilmembers recommending an award, utilizing the average of non-zero award recommendations. And you might say, well, why would someone have a zero recommendation? The reasons could vary from possible conflict of interest to not supporting a particular application.
That was me. I have a conflict of interest with All Health Network, so I could not...
I was wondering what that was about.
And so in that particular case, her recommendation was zero, because that's her employer, and in that case, it wasn't factored into the average that's included in the recommendation. So it didn't hurt it, didn't help it, no impact. We rounded each recommendation, average recommendation, to the nearest $50, and then we were over the allotted budget. So we reduced all the community partner awards by 15% to stay within the allotted budget, which means the total award recommendation that we have in front of you tonight is $68,000. The total award recommendation for Stadium District Funding is $565,350. So the reason why that's significantly less is many councilmembers, a majority of councilmembers, indicated they wanted to have another opportunity next year to consider applications for this funding. So people who were awarded funding this year or new applicants could submit requests next year for this remaining funding, if we stick with this amount. There are some award recommendations that involve applicants with limited experience. In those cases, the city has identified a more experienced partner that can and is willing to receive funds on their behalf and utilize the financial controls in place within their organization to ensure appropriate handling of the funds. We're really excited to see so many people choose to participate in these funding requests, but we also want to make sure that the funds are appropriately monitored and used as appropriately as possible. A couple of kind of unusual notes. Two applicants chose to apply for the local partnership funding for an arts and cultural program. You may remember that I just a few minutes ago said that the arts and cultural program requests were excluded from this. In our invitations for applicants, they were excluded, but didn't stop two applicants from actually applying for any of this. And in the case of those two applicants, the Council is recommending to give them funding. Both of those applicants also applied for Lodger's Tax Funds and are being recommended for receiving funding when that comes before Council next week. So if you'd like more information on which two applicants those are or how much those funds are, we can share that with you. Or if you're not interested, that's fine too. Another unusual scoring result that's included in these recommendations is that two applicants are being recommended to receive a greater amount of funds than what they applied for. So if a councilmember recommended an amount higher than what they applied for, it potentially could skew the results. And in this case, it allowed the final recommendation to be higher than what the applicants were applying for. So tonight, if you wanted to, you could change that to saying, hey, applicants, our awardees shouldn't receive any more than what they applied for. Or you could say, let's leave it the way that is recommended this year, but next year, let's say that, so that we can avoid a single council member skewing the award amount by putting a lot towards a single award.
Which two applications were they?
In that one, the Town Hall Arts Center applied for $19,200, and the Council's scoring average is $22,950.
I skewed that by like $50,000 in there.
Way to go, Ben.
And then the other one was the Littleton High School Chess Club. They asked for $300,000, and the average ends up being $350,000. So...
Try it again.
I skewed that one again.
See, math is hard.
Math is simple. I just think they deserve it.
So just to point out the kind of three little things we talked about there is, is one, we reduced the overall grant to bring it back under budget by 15% each awardee. And so technically, your $4,900 is under balance with the current recommendations. So if you wanted to say add that $4,900 to one or more applicants, we could make that change if you'd like us to. Also, if you wanted us to reduce the Town Hall Arts Center and Littleton High School Chess Clubs to their requested amounts, we could do that, and that would add back more money available to reallocate or to put back into the budget for next year. And if you wanted to reduce or change the amounts of those two arts and cultural applications, so because they've also applied for and received funding, and other applicants were told not to apply for this funding, we could adjust that as well.
Yeah, that's what I think we should look at.
Okay.
If everyone else didn't do it, because that was the rule, but these did it against the rules, and we have rewarded money.
Which ones are those?
So it's line number 26 under the local partnership funding award, and line number 19, so sorry, line number 19 and line number 26. So the Arapahoe Community College Foundation has a study abroad program for students, and they asked for funding from the local partnership funding, as well as from the Arts and Culture Commission. In the case of their ask under this one, they asked for $2,000. The recommended average is $1,400. In the Lodger's Tax, they asked for $74,876, and they're being recommended for $16,000. And then that was the Arapahoe Community College Foundation. The Littleton Fine Arts Guild, the Depot Art Gallery, they want to pay jurists for an art competition, and they requested $2,000. Did I speed that up? And we were recommending $1,400. That's Littleton Fine Arts Guild. And then, did I combine the two?
Okay, then what did they ask for the arts and culture?
In the Arts and Culture Commission, they're requesting $12,000, and the recommended award is $7,500.
So I'm sorry, just to clarify one more time. Both, when the application processes were opened,
Yes.
there were no restrictions on not applying to both? Is that correct?
We told applicants they would not be eligible for the local partnership funding. And these two applicants chose to apply for it anyways. And in the Council review, you chose to recommend awards to them. But potentially, many other applicants would have applied if they thought awards were available.
Okay, well, I'm sorry. I think I misunderstood. I just wanted to clarify what you were asking.
So I think we should exclude them.
I agree.
I agree.
That changes the 15% by a hair.
Yeah, so that gives us how much extra fund?
But isn't that, we don't have to spend every penny either.
So that would add back in $3,800 on top of the $4,900 that's available because of the reduction.
So it's going to change by some change, maybe.
But if you wanted to reallocate those funds, you could. And was there any interest in changing the two that are more than what they requested? Or should we leave it where it is?
I'm okay with that.
I think we should take it down. I mean, it's what they requested.
It wouldn't have, yeah, I just don't have initiative.
I just don't think it's a good idea to give more than people ask for.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
So Town Hall and...
And Littleton High School Chess Club.
Littleton High School, I mean, $50,000, but...
Might be consistent. I think there's consensus.
There goes some shattered dreams.
Yeah, I would. So if you'd like next year, we can just not even send the Council consideration, you know, that any applications that are the arts and cultural ones, so you won't even be in this kind of situation next year. And then we could also, again, just automatically reduce the average to the maximum requested. Would you like us to do that as a rule in the future years?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so now...
That'll be for future councils to determine, not this council.
Now we have an additional...
Wait, wait, wait. One second, that last point you just made, Mike.
What's that, sorry?
For future councils to determine, not this council.
Oh, yeah, exactly right. Any future council could change whatever rules they want.
Exactly.
Whatever criteria they want to change.
It's a recommendation.
Yeah, but it's a good recommendation.
Yeah, one of the benefits of capping it at the amount that requested is, you know, we hope in time to, in these grant applications and in these grant agreements, they really need to be responsible for using that money for what it is that they've said. So if they ask for 10, and you give them 15, then they're trying to shoot more than $5,000 for use that...
Makes sense.
Yep.
But I think to what Councilmember Driscoll was doing in terms of awarding a higher amount, like, you're also like giving positive encouragement, like, please do ask for what you need. And I think...
I know they're all watching, so I know I get free tickets.
Exactly. They can certainly all hear.
GD probably is watching.
But I think this goes more to like a consideration for the future is for us to maybe even be able to provide comment or blind comment back to the applicants during the process, say, this is great, go for more next year, or like, we felt that this wasn't quite what, you know, something of that nature, have a little bit more communication rather than outright acceptance or rejection with a flat number.
Can we talk about the YMCA of Denver? What did we finally, I mean, to me, I bet you YMCA applied to every community that was getting stadium funds. So they probably walked away with, you know, $2, $3, $4, $5 million, I'm guessing. And we're awarding them $25,000.
$110,000.
$110,000. And my question, and one of the reasons I didn't give them any money, was because is it specifically for Littleton? And I don't know if we ever got an answer to that. I don't recall.
I think it is.
Yeah, I wanted the money to go to...
In the application, it's not.
Yeah, that's, it was based off their Colorado location, their South Colorado location. So that's why I didn't give them any money, just because I wanted to go to specifically Littleton, not to the overall chapter, I guess, or the overall community. I know it's going to help the kids around Littleton too, but I was hoping it would go just to the one on South Broadway.
Just say we'll support youth programming in the Littleton area.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, was this the facility? Or is this the chapter that manages the facility within our district? Maybe that's a...
It's the managing facility.
It's the managing, yeah, the managing...
It oversees the...
They can get it any way they want.
Maybe we should look at that again.
Can't we put restrictions on it?
Well, we do in our definitions, you know, like the stadium funds in the Littleton community. Well, that address was the Denver address.
I wasn't concerned about the address though, just because it just did focus on Littleton and the narrative.
But I guarantee you, they did this for every community across us, which is smart. I would have done the same thing.
Good fundraising strategy, but yeah, I mean, I think maybe I share a concern in the sense that like, would we be able to say two facilities located within the geography, you know, restrict funding for usage for facilities within the geography?
I think Council could do whatever they want. They could choose to receive the money or not.
I mean, I'd be, personally, I'd be willing to make the award as long as it had that restriction in place that it were to be used for facilities located within our city limits.
What other ones do we have besides more on Broadway?
Facilities and programming.
It's just the one, the one physical location, the one YMCA is just on Broadway.
So I think we should specify for that. I don't mind changing the amount.
And who's going to follow up to make sure that does occur?
Lucy, so...
Right, Lucy.
If we put this provision in, would you still want to receive the money?
I say no, but that's...
That's you. That's a question to YMCA? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, it sounds like the Council would like to put a stipulation on these grant funds. And so we can ask the applicant if they're willing to accept that stipulation in return for receiving the funds that are recommended.
Yeah, I'd say if we can give it, I would like to see it used.
Yeah, they sign a statement saying, agreeing to that.
Try to put that, what do you think, Reed?
Yeah, no, so in terms of just the physical YMCA locations within the city of Littleton, that's what Council directs it to be used towards, so it's on Dry Creek.
Yeah, well, it doesn't have to be on Dry Creek, but within the city of Littleton.
That's the only YMCA location within the city of Littleton.
Is that their only field? So I mean, do they have fields somewhere else that they use, they rent? I mean, if it's, it's being used within the city of Littleton, that's what counts.
That's another thing too, is because I know that like they'll run like a soccer program or whatnot, and they may rent fields within the city of Littleton. And I think as long as, maybe not facility specific, but as long as programming activities or, you know, usage occurs within our geographic boundary.
And it's for youth, it's not for adults.
It's not for guys like Patrick.
Yep.
I would advocate that we use all the money on the...
So just clarify, everybody is okay with that stipulation?
Sure, yes.
Do we still want to give them $110,000?
No, not me.
I do if they accept that stipulation.
I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with that too, all right.
Yeah, no way it's changing.
So now, because we have a delta, we have extra money from the applicants that submitted two applications onto us. And then we have, without that, we have the 68, the delta between the $68,000 and the $72,900, right?
So there's a total available right now, undesignated, of $12,650.
On the partnership.
Instead of doing, reducing it by 15%, can we reduce it by some other amount? So it comes out, in other words, by reducing it by 13%? 13%.
We could, if that's your direction.
I mean, I don't know.
Or if you're looking at this and you see something that you're like, you know what? We want to change, however you want to do it, yes. Answer is yes, customer growth.
There you go.
It's just that, it's just an easy way to do it.
Yeah, I would be a fan of that.
I guess the question is, do we all agree that we should use the $72,900 that's set aside for this?
I think we should. I think so.
We haven't always in the past, haven't used the amount.
And so just evenly distribute that as much as we can, and there might be a little bit left over, but it'll mostly be used. Sounds good.
I would say distribute it to those that have under a certain dollar amount then. You know, maybe under $4,000, you know, maybe under $1,000. Let the money go to them versus, you know, who's this, was that Dr. Scholl guy? Is he in that category?
Or is he...
This was Stadium District.
He's only in the other one.
No, he wasn't a good partner.
I think it makes it hard. I think it should be equitable. He's not just in anything in local partnership funding.
Well, there's no real huge ones anyway, and, you know, there's no big ones.
I think we had enough information on Dr. Stein. When you, I think, was it you that sent the report and said you did a lot of investigating and reflection?
Yeah, emails. So it's Jim's decision that whatever we award to that gentleman, that Littleton Public Schools Foundation is going to actually get the check, and he will have to get the money from them. We have a couple that we're doing that for. Like Samba is going to go through an organization in Boulder, and they've been working with them for at least 14 years. And they've been doing that because they're not a nonprofit. He wasn't a nonprofit. And the same thing with the chess club. We're going to have to distribute the money through Littleton Public Schools Foundation.
Okay.
I'm going with that.
Lucy did a great job of trying to put controls in place to really make...
Well, and then, no, if it were not to happen to go toward Littleton or whatever the heck, then that $75,000, whatever it is, $110,000, or what was it, $75? Again, substantial amount. $44,000, is that what the final was?
$110,000.
For Dr. Schau, Dr. Stein?
Oh, YMCA, oh, the stadium.
That's $62,000 of the Stadium District Funding.
Yeah, okay, there, that was the final amount there. Yeah, I mean, so if for some reason he fails to spend correctly or all of it, it goes back to the city.
So one of...
It should not go back to, say, Littleton, to public schools.
And we could look at spending, let's say, that money or whatever next year.
They're available then, to distribute, yeah.
So it was Jim's wish that anybody that received funding, in order to apply next year, they need to tell us exactly how they spent it. Because we only had maybe 15 from last year that actually sent the letters, even though Kyle sent a letter asking them, can you please tell us how you spent the money? Well, now it's going to be a rule. We want to know how you spent it. Are they going to have to like produce receipts kind of thing? Or just show...
Parents typically don't, but they at least need to provide a...
Just a narrative, yeah.
Okay. And photos, if they want to share photos of, there's one that wants to run a soccer tournament. Send us photos of your soccer tournament. We'll publicize.
If they're savvy, they'd ask for a scheduled appearance at the front of Council, so that you guys would buy us the next time you consider them.
You know, this was a suggestion. I used to have money when I was working from my vendor, and there was an exact list of things I had to provide. It's called proof of performance. It is very typical in distribution. And maybe we should move towards something like that, where there's some criteria.
This is what we want reported back?
Yeah, and maybe the first year doesn't have to be very complicated, like a mini budget, and then it becomes more sophisticated. Like, you know, if you have this type of event, that's what we have, like different types of events require different, different types of, project requires different kinds of criteria.
Good discussion, Pam. As you know, about getting away from this, from this piece of it. Stadium funds is a different deal. But getting away altogether from, you know, other than in-kind donations, I mean, to take our taxpayer dollars and to basically, you know, award it to people that apply, you know, I don't know, there's been some discussion about doing away with it altogether.
No, no problem. I like it. It's just I don't like giving money when we don't know where it's going. That's what I...
But we're not even giving away our money. We're giving away the citizens' money to these nonprofits. Why don't we encourage citizens to give their money to these nonprofits? I, with what Patrick just said, I totally agree. We've talked about that in the past. I'm uncomfortable giving away just money like this.
I, it's just an easy, it's just an easy way to do it.
Yeah, I would be.
But I would like to.
I guess the question is, do we all agree that we should use the seventy-two thousand nine hundred dollars that's set aside for this?
I think we should.
I think so.
We haven't always in the past, I haven't used the amount.
And so just, just evenly distribute that as much as we can, and it's, there might be a little bit left over, but it mostly be used.
Sounds good.
I would say distribute it to those that have under a certain dollar amount then, you know, maybe under four thousand, you know, maybe from, you know, under a thousand, let the money go to them versus, you know, who's this, who was that Dr. Schoel guy, is he in that category?
Or is he?
This was stadium district.
He's only in the other one.
I think that makes it.
No, he wasn't a good.
I think it's just be equitable.
He was not given anything in local partnership funding.
Well, there's no real huge ones anyway, and, yeah, there's no big ones.
I think we had enough information on Dr. Stein, uh, when you, I think, was it you that sent the report and said you did a lot of investigating and it was like?
Yeah, emails, so it's Jim's decision that, um, whatever we award to that gentleman, that Littleton Public Schools Foundation is going to actually get the check, and he will have to get the money from them. We have a couple that we're doing that for, like Samba is going to go through, uh, an organization in Boulder, and they've been working with them for at least fourteen years, and being, uh, they've been doing that because they're not a nonprofit, he wasn't a nonprofit. And the same thing with the chess club, we're going to have to distribute the money through Littleton Public Schools Foundation.
Okay, I'm going with that.
Lucy did a great job of trying to put controls in place.
Well, and then now, if, if it were not to happen, to go toward Littleton or whatever the heck, then that seventy-five thousand, whatever it is, a hundred and ten, or what was it, seventy-five, you're getting substantial money, forty-four, is that what the final was?
Hundred and ten.
For Dr. Shaw, uh, Dr. Stein.
Oh, YMCA, oh, Dr. Stein.
That's sixty-two thousand of the stadium district funding.
Yeah, okay, there, that was the final amount there. Yeah, I mean, if, so if for some reason he fails to spend correctly, or all of it, it goes back to the city.
So one of.
It should not go back to, say, Littleton, it's not public schools.
And we could look at spending, let's say, that money or whatever next year.
They're available then, to distribute, yeah.
So it was Jim's wish that anybody that received funding, they, in order to apply next year, they need to tell us exactly how they spent it, because we only had maybe fifteen from last year that actually sent the letters, even though Kyle sent a letter asking them, can you please tell us how you spent the money? Well, now it's going to be a rule, we want to know how to.
Yep, that's good.
They're going to have to like produce receipts kind of thing, or, or just show?
Typically don't, but they at least need to provide a.
Just, just narrative, yeah.
Okay, just. And photos, if they want to share photos of, there's one that wants to run a, a soccer tournament, send us photos of your soccer tournament, we'll publicize.
If they're savvy, they'd ask for a scheduled appearance at front of councils, so they can buy us the next time you consider them.
You know, this is a, a suggestion, I used to have money when I was working from, uh, my vendor, and there was an exact list of things I had to provide, uh, it's called proof of performance, it is very typical in distribution, and maybe we should move towards something like that, where there's some criteria.
This is what we want reported back?
Yeah, uh, and maybe the first year doesn't have to be very complicated, like a mini budget, and then it becomes more sophisticated, like, you know, if you have this type of event, that's what we have, like, different types of events require different, different types of, project requires different kinds of criteria.
The discussion, Pam, as you know, about getting away from this, from this piece of it, stadium funds is a different deal, but getting away altogether from, you know, other than any kind of donations, I mean, to take our taxpayer dollars and to basically, you know, award it to, to people that apply, you know, I know there's been some discussion about doing away with it altogether.
No, no problem, I, I, I like it, it's just I, I don't like giving money when we don't know where it's going, that's what I.
But we're, we're not even giving away our money, we're giving away the citizens' money to these nonprofits, why don't we encourage citizens to give their money to these nonprofits? I, I, with, with Patrick just said, I, I totally agree, we've talked about that in the past, I, 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 I'm uncomfortable giving away just money like this.
I don't think we're giving it away, I think we're investing it in the community.
Investment means you're going to get a profit, what is the profit we're getting back on it?
People. Community, but that's philosophy.
That's why the proof of performance would help.
Discussion next time we do budget, not go out there.
Uh, my thing with, I, I definitely think a, a short narrative is great, but I don't, we don't want to put more restrictions on folks, um, they're already, nonprofits especially are already hammered with a lot of other, because, because the way it works, which is a little bit different in the corporate environment, with nonprofits, you have different grants from different things that all have different requirements, you have to have dedicated staff to manage all of those grants, so we don't want to have more hoops for them to go through. I, I think it's very fair to have a short narrative of how did you spend it, or a picture or something like that, but budgets and asking for those things, it just creates a little bit more hurdle, not because they don't have the information, but because they have to go and find it, dedicate it, put it in a PDF document, seal it, and that's what's going to eat into time, um, and that's, that's the overhead.
In the past, I will tell you, there were any reporting requirements that the city asked on these partnership grants, so the template that we have drafted, and it's in the draft process, which does have reporting requirements for them to at least explain what it is that they, to acknowledge that they've used the funds for those amounts, I mean, if you, if council are deciding this, if it's back in the budget next year, and if we get a response from whoever we gave money to, you know, the previous year, then guess what, you're out.
Yeah.
They'll learn, yeah, they'll forget to do it, and we'll remind them and send a letter, they'll send one then.
Well, I just think we need to get some.
But to the mayor, to Mayor Protem's point, I don't think we were ever contemplating some, some really, well, you know, art, but related.
No.
No, that was only.
But some basic.
Report.
What might, what might be nice is if, you know, throughout the year, if these, some of these groups came in and for their three minutes in public mob comment period, just gave us a quick update about, you know, what they, what they've been up to, you know, we don't need ten, fifteen, thirty minute presentations, which is a quick, like, hey.
I'm not on council, I said they should do thirty minutes. Going for it. Bring it in.
How we get these ideas from you.
Make it a quick, just, that may be something to tell them, like, we'd love to do from you.
Or as an option.
As an option, like, not definite, but it just, you know, might help, help the community to know what they're up to.
I have suggested that for the housing authority to come in and do regular meetings, or regular comments, and they just, they hardly ever do it.
They're doing it.
In favor, personally be in favor of keeping the, the reporting bar low, but I do like the idea of saying that you do need to put, submit something if this is a repeat, you know, grant, so you do need to report on something that you did with the previous.
I recommend we give staff direction to move forward with the few changes we did make, you know, and proceed, or we can just beat this to death.
Exactly.
You know how much I love talking?
Grab your direction.
Lucy, thanks for all your help on this too.
And on the stadium funds, on the stadium funds, are we in agreement that we're holding on still to those for next year?
Yeah.
Thanks, Lucy.
I just want to confirm, uh, rap, uh, number nineteen, we've dropped the final to zero. Application number twenty-six, we've dropped it to zero.
Yes.
And then on the purple, stadium district funding, number thirty-two is three hundred, and number forty-two is nineteen thousand two hundred.
Yes, correct.
And then.
That's because of the, the Patrick factor.
And thirty-one, the Sean Stein is going to be Littleton Public Schools and LPS Foundation?
And the same thing with the chess club, and Samba Colorado, who is not a nonprofit, their funding will run through, uh, the Boulder, I think it's Boulder Arts Commission, but they're, they're definitely a nonprofit.
I thought a requirement is that they're nonprofit, is, is that not true?
That, that was one of the criteria, um, and so the way we're trying to accomplish that is we found nonprofits that can receive that money on their behalf and help.
But they're not a nonprofit, they're ultimately getting the money.
That, that, that's true, that's true, so we, we have, we have, you know, that, that situation, so in the case of, you know, one of the applicants, they said that should they be awarded the money, they're going to apply for their nonprofit status, you know, um, this, they're kind of getting started, um, so, but you, you make a good point.
And so my other question was, we're going to drop the fifteen percent down to either twelve, thirteen, fourteen, whatever it takes to get as close to possible to the seventy-two nine.
Yep.
Jerry, I, I do share your concern on the Samba, one, like, I'm a little.
So do I.
I'm a little on the fence about it. Um, I'd say, you know, again, if this money helps them get over the hump and, like, register as a non, nonprofit, I would say that's.
Okay, that's our criteria, I think we should stick to criteria.
And they're meeting the criteria by using a nonprofit to help them provide the overhead of some of that infrastructure, I mean, that's the.
That's gaming.
The event of the service is still taking place in the city of Littleton.
Are you familiar with that? Are you familiar with that group?
I, I have a little interpretation. All right, so I asked where the, what they plan to do with the funding, and she said most of it is to pay the musicians that are, um, going to be accompanying the groups.
Well, that, that's all well and good, but bottom line is, our criteria is nonprofit, they're not a nonprofit. The fact that they're getting it through some other nonprofit organization specifically for them, is we're saying, oh, we don't, then our rules really don't matter.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I, I agree with Jerry and Kat.
But yet, we're, we're enforcing other rules, but not this one.
I just think we said bad precedent.
That's right, I think it's more equitable, honestly, I'd, I'd be in favor of.
Next year if they're nonprofit, great.
Yeah, if they're nonprofit next year and they've got their, you know, five oh one.
Isn't it, say that on the application then?
It does, they have to answer the question, some of them answered no, and they, they applied anyways.
All right, so Lucy, there's consensus, well, there's majority that wants that direction that those folks be excluded.
So, so just to clarify, are you talking about just that one application, or do you want to discuss every application that is not a nonprofit?
Are there others?
There are others.
Which ones are not?
That's the criteria is that they're nonprofits.
So, for example, the Dr. Sean Stein, he, he's not a nonprofit, he said, he said he'll apply for it if he's awarded money, but we, we directed through the Littleton Public School Foundation to kind of that, but.
No, I, my, my family, we run a, a, a nonprofit, and we give out a lot of money every year, everybody has to be nonprofit when we give them the money for tax purposes.
It, it, for the tax deduction, but there's, there's not a tax deduction involved here.
You can't give away money to a nonprofit if they're not a nonprofit, but I will apply after I get the money, that's not how we should do this.
I think.
I tell you, and again, if we did that as our organization, it, we would violate all kinds of stuff.
So the Sean Stein one, though, is going to be administered, LPS Foundation agreed to administer.
If, if we awarded money.
Well, that's the same thing as the Samba, what is it, the Samba group?
Same thing as Samba, just different group.
Yeah, we, how do we distinguish between the two?
Well, I don't think we should, in my opinion, I don't think there is a difference, because these organizations are holding the risk, and they're holding, by accepting money from us, they are then doing everything that nonprofits are supposed to do to distribute money into their citizens, so if that agreement has been brokered, then I don't have a prob- I don't think that misses the criteria that we've set, I think that meets the criteria.
I think we have to be, um, across the board, you can't say, well, because it's Littleton Public Schools, it's okay, but for the Samba group, it's not okay, I think we have to be.
Consistent, so, so there's a total of five applicants that would, would be affected by this?
One of them stirred coffee.
One of them is Littleton High School Chess Club, one of them is Littleton Lions Baseball, Lions Sports Booster Club.
That's not a nonprofit?
They're, they're not a nonprofit, they, they used to be a nonprofit, but expired in two thousand fourteen.
Which one is that?
Number thirty.
Number thirty-three.
Number thirty what, thirty-three?
Thirty-two and thirty-three, and then also, uh, I don't know, that, you know, uh, number twenty-eight is the BMS Public Library, uh, so, I, you know, certainly they're not a for-profit, that's the city of Littleton.
Yeah, yeah, this is in our rule, this is the stadium fund district rule, right? They have to be nonprofit.
No.
Oh, okay.
No, that's, this is our rule, this is your rule, your criteria. So, the, the, so there's five applicants that, that technically aren't nonprofit, do you want to treat them differently, do you want to treat them consistently, do you want to leave it as is?
But they're not using the money to generate revenue, they're specifically using this for programs within the city of Littleton. That's our hope.
That's their description, yes.
That's our hope.
So their partnership says nonprofit, or does it? Both are programs say nonprofit, or?
What program, sorry?
Well, the Littleton Partnership.
The local funding.
Like, yeah.
Says that nonprofits will be given priority, we didn't specifically say.
Oh, perfect, then that's good.
For both?
For both?
Oh.
Okay, that's perfect, the only difference in, uh, both funding is for the stadium district, we required youth activities, that was the only difference, and we didn't have a twenty-five thousand dollar limit.
And honestly, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reverse direction on my.
I'm okay then with giving it, as long as we're consistent.
Speeches, Steve.
Thank you, thanks for clarifying that.
Language change. They're all back in.
Yes, so next year during the budgeting process, then you say, if you're not a nonprofit, we're not going to accept an application from you, but something to think about till next, next year.
Reed, how does that work? You give money to an organization who's not a nonprofit in January, and they finally get their nonprofit in June, how is that a tax, how is that taxed? Do you have any idea?
Let's bring in a CPA to discuss that.
And we're not looking for a tax credit.
They would be getting taxes that in terms of income, if you will, they don't have a nonprofit staff.
When they're given the money, they're nonprofits, so they have to pay taxes on it. So some of that money we're giving away, we'll end up going to taxes.
Or it could be awarded later at the time they receive it.
So other than.
Yeah, now that might be a criteria, then you add that, yeah, you'll get this money once you get your nonprofit, your five oh one, on proof of, you know.
Yeah.
And proof of registration, and that's how we do it, we always make sure they have to send us their, uh, their information.
But not for this year, for next year, next year.
Right. Yeah, yeah, for next year, I think we might want to add that kind of specificity.
So everybody's back in nonprofit, other than the fact that the two stadium ones that we're not going to go.
Over the amount that they.
Correct.
Okay, that makes a difference.